Good evening. Call to order the special meeting of the Board of Education for February 10th, 2021. Can everybody please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. This evening, we are closed for the actual public in person, but we did allow for public comment this evening, and I do believe that Ms. Vitucci did receive something via email that she will go ahead to read.
Yes, I have one public comment from Lee Ann Ader, district resident. Good evening. I am the parent of a junior at Monroe Woodbury and a huge supporter of going back to school and playing sports. I just wanted to propose something to you for all the athletic teams competing. I am not an adversary of remote school and have seen the negative effect on my daughter's grades, as well as heard the same from others. That being said, many parents feel it would be safer for all those involved if athletes were allowed to choose to remain remote during their season. Not something myself nor my daughter would normally be behind, but the way the school is quarantining healthy children, who are by CDC standards a safe six feet apart and wearing masks, is unfair and kids are willing to sacrifice to play. The practice of team remote is being done at many schools around the state and would lessen interaction with others, thus lessening the spread among each other and other schools. Staying in smaller pods will give their teams a better chance of actually having a season. Quarantining healthy athletes can and will have a negative effect on our team's seasons. If three players are exposed from the same team in classrooms, that could mean positions aren't available, games are forfeited, and rankings drop considerably, all for kids to remain home who are healthy. This isn't fair to athletes who are doing everything they are supposed to do because they want to play their sport. Sports are not spreading COVID; gatherings are. And by not allowing sports, what else do these kids have to do? My daughter had to quarantine for a second time recently for being exposed on an early dismissal day when she only had a few classes and there were minimal students in the room. She again had a doctor's appointment and they were shocked no test was required, as there is no proof that any student actually quarantines. Regardless, she followed all the rules and never exhibited a sign of illness or contracted COVID, but felt punished for having to stay home. If the option of letting athletes be remote during their season isn't feasible, there is the option to have them get tested once a week, again, being done in many other high schools and colleges. It could be done at the school or privately, and I have yet to hear of it not being covered by the government or insurance. Again, sports are not spreading COVID, and adding high risk before any sport because of COVID is absurd. Life is a risk. Playing a sport keeps you healthier and more conditioned to fighting disease. When athletes sign up to play a sport, there is a risk of getting injured. They do it anyway. Their parents allow them to do it anyway. Would you not cross the street for fear of getting hit by a car? No, you do it anyway, but it happens all the time. You stop, you look both ways, and you proceed. You take precautions, just like athletes do every time they play. They think about what they are going to do, and then they execute their plan. Now, with COVID, even more so. The damage done mentally to all the athletes and students who have had a year of their lives taken away is far more punishment than any child should receive. Please stop punishing them and let them play. Many of our Monroe Woodbury athletes are trying to be recruited to help pay for exorbitant college tuition, and New York athletes are falling far behind due to their lack of playtime. They need recent times, video footage, et cetera, to submit to coaches and have lost a year of their playing time. Not all athletes are financially able to play club sports, and this is hurting them even more. School sports are their only chance at being seen. Now they have to compete even harder and have had many options taken away from them, especially the seniors. Will you be the people holding them back or supporting them and moving forward to get them back to reality? I hope you can consider these choices and help our athletes get their lives back. Thank you and stay safe.
Thank you.
Can I respond to something because Ms. Adler mentioned two things? One of the things that she referenced was the CDC guidelines, and I just want to make sure that people who are watching this video, that they understand that Monroe Woodbury in Orange County not only has to follow the CDC guidelines, but the guidelines that are put forth by the Orange County Health Department, which is different. So I think that's an important piece. She should also note that the superintendents of Orange County have now reached out to the Department of Health, to the New York State Department of Health, to ask about a clarification on what the practice is in Orange County of precautionary quarantining. So we are in the process of getting clarification from the Department of Health, because it's a matter of interpretation. Our understanding is that other counties have not had precautionary quarantining. We do in Orange County, and because we are here in Orange County, we have to follow the Orange County guidelines. There's more to come, you know, from this, and I certainly want to share the information with our community, but I just wanted to make that point because I think she correctly says that CDC does not require that, and she's 100% correct. Orange County does. So that's where the difference is, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood.
Elsie, is there any timeframe on when you expect that to...
So, I'm hoping that we should get a response within a week, because we have reached out to the state rather than the county. The county is supporting our question of clarification, because as I said, there's other people that are, that are other counties that are coming up with a different interpretation of the rules.
Okay. Thank you. We are now going to have a presentation regarding high-risk sports by Mrs. Rodriguez and Ms. Hock, our athletic director.
Thank you. So I want to give a little context before we begin to do our presentation and help people understand why it is on February 10th, we're sitting down and the board is taking a vote. How did this come to be? So, on January 22nd, the governor came out and his statement was he was going to allow higher-risk sports to commence, subject to local health department decision, right? So, the governor comes out on January 22nd, he says, "I'm going to allow high-risk sports to commence," but that is really going to be the decision of the various county commissioners. So that gets pushed to each commissioner of each county. The commissioners, seven commissioners in seven counties, on January 27th say, "We're going to allow school districts to make that decision on their own. However, we, the counties, will give the school districts the guidance." So we don't get the guidance until January 5th. Now, I just, I'm sorry, February 5th. And just so that you understand, the season starts February 1st and it goes through February 28th. So it's a really, really short season. So we received the guidance on January, I'm sorry, I keep saying January, February 5th. So, you see that on the 29th, we get the okay, and here is what we're talking about. We're talking about winter sports, which includes basketball, cheerleading, ice hockey, and wrestling. These are the winter sports that are considered high-risk sports. The fall sports are football and volleyball, and that's fall sports, that's fall two.
Yeah, it's actually considered fall sports too, because elsewhere in the state, the fall sport season had already happened back in September. So we're just designating this as fall two, and everyone in our section is utilizing the fall two season.
Correct. And then you have the spring sports, which is the boys' lacrosse. And finally, the decision, which originated with the governor and then went to the Orange County Commissioner, now is in the hands of each individual school district. So let's talk a little bit about what high-risk sports are and what we're currently doing. I think that, I want to thank Ms. Hock for these pictures. We currently have, the true number is 499, it's not 500, but you never know. We currently have 499 students from 23 teams participating in athletic practice after school each day.
And that's not including our off-season students who are also participating as well. These are specifically winter athletes.
And I think that the goal has always been to have maximum participation. When you talk about students being at home, the opportunity for them to be in school or be outside and participating in these sports is really, really important for them. And you can see from these pictures that we are socially distant, they're wearing a mask, so they're doing, they're being very compliant with the rules. Our current situation is most low to moderate sports are competing, they're doing it virtually, unless they're outdoors, like hockey. Is there another group?
We're not competing in hockey because it's high-risk. Skiing is competing outdoors, and we do have the option of conducting indoor track meets outdoors, which is what we were intending to do, but with the snow, that hasn't been possible yet. But they do have permission as well.
And I think that one of the things that we've done very well, and I give all credit to Ms. Hock and Dr. Sassy, is that we've created a really good protocol for creating a safe environment for our students. So there's a daily COVID screening, there's mandatory masks, and then there's social distancing. Another great picture of our students, our swimmers. Can you talk a little bit about what we just did, I think it was yesterday, before I go on to that, with our swimmers?
Oh, yesterday, we were able to, Monday, get live streaming up and running for our swim meets. And it's something that we had discussed and talked about, and we want to give an opportunity for parents and families to be able to see their students compete, especially for our seniors. It's a very tough thing when you can't watch your kids swim or compete their senior year. So we were able with the help of, you know, people in MCC, Dana Kristanski, and Noreen Guerra, we were able to get livestream up and running, so their parents could actually watch their students, because spectators are currently not allowed under Section 9 rules.
Right, and that is Section 9 rules, not our rules. And so one of the things that we talk about is the physical well-being of our students, and this allows them to be physically conditioning. There are some cardiac health concerns, and we should, do you want to talk a little bit about what we did a couple of weeks ago?
Sure. We actually ran a, to back it up just a little bit, one of the issues when we were considering what we were going to do with winter sports, is that our kids are out of shape. They have not been competing, they have not been participating in athletic activities, or exercise for that matter, many of them since last March. So their conditioning level is not fantastic. Add to that the inability to regularly participate in off-season conditioning programs, which we have always done in the past. These kids are being brought in and told that within six days, they're going to be expected to compete. Their physical conditioning is not good, and one of our biggest concerns is the cardiac issues surrounding COVID. And with those cardiac issues, we actually took a step, working with Dr. Sassy and Dr. Fekke, who is a cardiac pediatrician, pediatric cardiologist, and he created an opportunity for us to bring our kids in to get cardiac screening. That wasn't just for Monroe Woodbury students, but it was for students throughout the county. And we screened over 60 students that day, and the expectation or the anticipation was that at some point cardiac screening was going to be mandatory for COVID students who had tested positive for COVID. And that has actually already happened, that we are looking at that and making sure that our students who have had COVID have that, have an extra screening to address those cardiac concerns. So, given the issue with the physical conditioning, the cardiac concerns, it was just something we were a little nervous about. Also, in terms of student physical well-being, we took into account the fact that when they come in, they essentially are going to have six practice days to prepare for a season, and that doesn't allow for progressive instruction. Typically, what we like to do is we like to not only work on conditioning, but work on individual skills and concepts, progress to small group activities, and then eventually get to game-like situations. If you are familiar with basketball or any of the team sports, there, you need to put in a significant amount of time getting the students to be able to work together, creating your offensive set, your plays. There essentially was no time to do that with this high-risk sports season. And I want to mention that, I know that Ms. Rodriguez mentioned that on the 22nd, we were given the go-ahead for high-risk sports. There was no indication before that 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 was coming. At the level of the governor, he had not even blinked when that was brought up before, so it was one of those things that just came out of nowhere. We were in a good position in our district, because we already had a program up and running for all of our teams, and having to stop and focus on competition essentially was a disruption for us.
Thank you. So we've talked a lot about in, as a board and as a district, about the social-emotional well-being, and one of the things that our students are craving is the opportunity to be with one another and be, participate in somewhat normal-like situations. The other thing about having the students come in and being with their coaches is, and you see it up there, it's another set of eyes on our students, and I think that's really important, having as many people check and connect with our kids, and so this is another opportunity. This week, we had Eye Opening Enterprises did a presentation for our athletes. It was called Inner Strength, and it was, I think, how many students?
We had almost 200 students log in on a Monday night at 8:00.
Yeah. And can you talk a little bit about the presentation and the takeaway?
Well, sure. This was an opportunity for us to acknowledge to our athletes that we understand what they're going through. And the social-emotional piece has been significant for them. It has been for all of our students, but without sports and without practicing, without competition and being a member of a team, our athletes are having a significant issue in finding their identity again. So this program was aimed at talking about resilience, acknowledging what they've lost, and giving them some tools to be mentally stronger. We've gotten some great feedback on it. We had a lot of coaches in attendance as well, and it was just, it was our way of letting the kids know, "We get it, we understand, and we're in this together."
Yeah, I thought, this is a great picture, just if you're wondering, this is actually the track team, right?
It is.
It's a track team, and Lori said that they have to run, had to run up a hill, and their reward was that they could slide down with these little...
They're still having fun.
That's really important. Academics, that's another component. When you are in, on a team, you have a coach who's checking in on you, finding out if you're doing your work, if you are keeping up with your grades, and so that has a really positive impact. And when students are engaged in extracurricular activities, it really only benefits them as a student in school, because it motivates them. So, I think this is where we talk about what we're recommending, right? It is up to the school district. We, number one, the number one item that I think is really important is that the season is extremely short. I talked about how we learned on the 22nd, we received the guidance on the 5th, and now we're on the 10th, and we are, and this is why we're here. We're here because we were given this opportunity and we needed to respond. We are concerned about the minimum number of required practices before these students go out and compete. Doesn't give us enough time. The season is limited, so it doesn't allow coaches to really prepare these students for competition. And I think Lori talked about the cardiac screening, right? So there's all these things that we needed to do to prepare, to safely have our kids participate and compete. And so, based on that, you know, these are the considerations that we have, other things that we need to think about. Other schools, if we compete with other schools, they may not be following the same protocols we are, because there is, there are guidelines, but protocols are individual to each school district. And that's really a concern of ours, because each individual school will make their own decisions. And so exposing our kids at this time, when there hasn't been enough practice, or hasn't been enough time to create really strong protocols countywide, we don't believe that they should be competing. There is a potential for an increased COVID, and I think one of the biggest things is that if we were to go to competition, we would have to then cut many of our students. We have about 500 students who are participating. This would allow for the largest number of students to participate. They would participate, and they would eventually be involved in game-like competitions.
If I may, I just want to speak to that for a moment. We had a large number of students come out, and that just showed us that the kids wanted to be back in school. They wanted to be back with their friends, they wanted to be in the buildings, participating, and getting some exercise and being involved in athletics. Because we were prepared, because we had had hours and hours and hours of meetings and preparation and setting up the protocols, we had, like I mentioned before, our program's already up and running. And I can't imagine sending kids home and saying, "Thanks for coming for the last three weeks," or "Two weeks, but we're going to make cuts now, and we're going to have tryouts, and you're not going to be invited to come back." These are kids who just need to be back in school, and this, I just can't imagine saying that to kids. "I'm sorry, you can't be here anymore," when they need it most. And that was the major reason for us to focus on maximum participation, taking care of our kids, you know, socially and emotionally, as opposed to focusing on the competitions. And we wanted to control everything that we could control, all the variables we could control to keep our kids safe. That was our focus. And traveling to other schools did not allow us to do that.
Do you have an example of the types of numbers from like the number of students participating in a particular sport down to what they would cut it to?
Sure. One of the, one of the bigger teams or bigger groups right now is boys' basketball. At boys' basketball, at the high school level, we have approximately 60 students who are coming on a regular basis. And it's tough too, because we can't have 60 students in the gym at the same time. So what we do is we have to rotate, and we have to have, for example, 9th and 10th graders at one time, 11th and 12th at another time. We even have returning players coming at another time as well, and we try and rotate and get them as much gym space as they can, but we can't bring them all together. That's another one of the reasons why it would be very difficult for them to conduct, for us to conduct tryouts and then have six practices for every single student to be able to participate. The season would be over at that point. How many kids do we usually keep on a basketball team? 11 or 12? So we would keep 22 kids out of 60.
So a third.
Excuse me?
Third.
Yeah.
I have a question.
That's a high risk to me.
I don't know if it's from Ms. Rodriguez or Ms. Hock, but you mentioned transportation to competition. What are the challenges involved with that?
One of the challenges is the number of students we can fit on a bus. There will be times that we could fit a whole team, and there will be times that we can't. And we're going to see that moving forward. That's going to be, continued to be an issue. There will be times where we may not, a track team is 100, over 100 students. There will be times...
What's the number you could put on a bus?
23, I believe it is.
23.
23.
23, and that includes the coaches.
We'd need five buses to get them...
Yes.
Right, and then the other piece that I just want to talk about is that when a bus driver gets quarantined, then that's a bus driver that's not available to drive our buses. So there's a lot of other mitigating factors when you talk about transporting kids to various...
It also could potentially take out the whole team if they...
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And Lori, my understanding is initially, a lot of schools were like, "Hey, we want to compete." But then, when they saw the number of schools dropping out of it, most of them are following a similar plan now, right?
That's exactly right. And I think everybody immediate was like, "Oh my God, we have an opportunity to do this, let's do it." And then they realized that there are a lot of things that need to be put into place before that happens. And again, I'm going to, I'm going to mention that we were prepared for this. We could have competed. I don't believe that we would have seen very many competitions, if any, because when we look at the low-risk sports that are being conducted right now, I can only think of one off the top of my head that actually went off as planned. And if that's what we're facing with low risk, now we're getting into high risk, six practices for some sports, 10 for others, February 28th is going to come very quickly.
But we often hear, you know, the example of, "Well, this school's doing it, and this school district..." And the reason for my question is, I think there were schools that were considering full competition, and they've subsequently changed because there just isn't going to be the competition there, so it's not worth the risk.
And the large schools specifically.
They're really struggling, and I think the other thing is that some school districts have chosen not to do anything, right? So we do consider to, we want the students to participate and engage in game-like scenarios, but some school districts just said they're not doing it at all.
They're not even practicing.
They're not even practicing.
And our modified kids are just as important as our varsity.
I hadn't even thought about the cut part of it. It's good that you brought that up.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, I'm curious, I know we talk about the social aspects of it. Have we, do you have a feel for what the kids think about this? Has this been discussed with them, and do the majority of them agree with this?
Not only has it been discussed with the students, it's been discussed with the coaches as well, and I can tell you that every day I'm hearing more comments from students saying, "Thank you, we never thought we would see this." I had one student the other day, one of the coaches relayed this information, where he was on the bus heading home, and it was a competition that we're allowed to go to at Mount Peter. And one of the students said, "I felt normal for two hours."
That's great.
You know, that's, that's, that's a big deal.
But even with those low-risk sports, Lori, they're competing virtually, correct?
Most.
Most.
Not the ones that are outside. Again, the indoor track, the indoor track, which is now outdoors, and the skiing are allowed to participate outside, because outdoors is much more, is much less of a risk. Low-risk sports like bowling and swimming are being conducted virtually.
Okay.
So when you tell the bowling team and the swimming team that they can't travel, and they can't be in person for their events, it was a hard thing for us to justify that we can allow the higher-risk sports to do more than what the low-risk sports are doing.
So, we have to have these kids in school six feet apart, but the governor said for sports, you could have them on top of each other for an hour.
They left it up to us.
In physical education, they have to be 12 feet apart.
Oh, so...
But when they're wrestling, they don't have to be.
So this is another one of these rules that he makes up as he goes along that makes...
Wrestlers are not allowed to shake hands, though.
Oh, but they...
That is a...
That was my question. I was there. That got rid of that.
Well, the question that I have is, we are assuming that different schools carry different risks of COVID-19 amongst the students. So if you look at, let's say, 500 students that are doing sports at Monroe Woodbury, when you go to the competition level, all of a sudden, that number gets cut down to 100. So are we saying that, I'm just trying to understand, that by allowing kids to compete, we are increasing the risk of transmitting COVID-19 because the other school may have more, or we may have more?
I don't think that that's what we're saying. I think what we're saying is that, given the shortness of this season, right, which is 28 days, probably less, that it doesn't make sense to go through the process, which would mean that we would have to cut these teams to maybe, I don't know, how many kids?
Yeah, and, and we're going, we would be going from 500, and yes, we would have to make cuts, but we're still going to have hundreds of students participating, and I think one of the biggest things is that we have been phasing in every aspect of education since the very beginning. And this was a 0 to 100 in a matter of days, and we did not feel like that was a safe path.
So I think that's important for people who are going to be watching this video to understand that it's a logistic nightmare, rather than we're going to worsen the risk of COVID transmission.
Right.
That's what it is.
But, but the other piece is, is that there are certain rules that apply for students when they attend the school, and when they play sports, there are different rules. So for example, if we were to put our basketball team on a bus, then we would be, the rules are different. So we would have then a large number of students on a bus, the bus driver, somebody gets sick, and the way the quarantine rules are in Orange County, the entire bus would be, would be done, the entire team. As a matter of fact, I apologize for going on my phone, but I was, 16 Suffolk High School teams must quarantine on first day of high-risk sports. 16 teams, 14 basketball teams and two wrestling teams. Day one, they're off for 10 days, in a very, very short season. And I think that that's the piece that worried us, that we would be putting kids on quarantine, which would make matters worse. And I think there was, it's a, it's a, several things that led us to this decision. It's not that we feel that other school districts are going to give us COVID, you know, are going to give our kids COVID, it's just, it isn't enough time to really create a good plan.
I think the piece to that too, Elsie, that we've discussed, is it's not just our athletes, it's, we have, most of our coaches are staff. So then, if they are now exposed, they are now quarantined, which not only impacts our athletic team, but at the middle school and high school level could potentially impact hundreds of non-athletic students, because their teacher is now in quarantine. So I think that's another factor that we have to consider.
I think across the board, Stacy, right? Because some of the coaches are elementary teachers.
Correct.
Right, so that's a big piece of it. I know before you mentioned that you talked to coaches and students, and the students, the feedback from the coaches is similar to?
100% coaches support students' ability to participate as much as possible.
Less of the competition and more of the involvement.
Especially in the, in this first phase of getting our kids back.
But hopefully in the next week, if you get clarification on the quarantine, that could be a dramatic change in the protocol.
For the next group, yes. I think that all those things are going to be important, and we're hopefully going to get new guidelines within the next week or so. we're hopefully going to get new guidelines within the next week or so. And I think that seems promising. I don't want to guarantee anything.
Well, if everybody else is doing it.
CDC is coming out with new guidelines for schools.
Yes. So I think that's going to be an important piece for us. So this is my recommendation, actually our recommendation, because Lori has been instrumental in giving me the guidance. So allow our coaches to conduct practices that allow contact like game situations all the way through February 28th. Lori mentioned this, the phase-in competition for high risk, you know, for the fall, for Fall II season, which begins March 1st, followed by the spring season, which begins April 19th. And again, maintain very, very strict safety protocols.
And the rationale also for the fall is because many of those, most of those sports are outside. And the risk is a lot less for outdoor sports. All of them have already been approved at the low and moderate risk level. But we're talking specifically football and what else was it?
Cross.
Football and volleyball. And I can't, because I can't understand why it's high risk.
Because everybody's touching the same ball.
Yep.
And it's indoor.
Lori, is there any-
Still no contact.
Is there any talk from Section 9 about allowing spectators?
We have a meeting next, or the 23rd, I believe it is. And right now, it is no spectators. But I believe the conversation is going to be, is going to come up regarding spectators being permitted for outdoor sports, possibly to one or two per player.
What about cardboard cutouts? That's-
I mean, there's a fundraiser.
Is there any rationale given as to why? I mean, if they're following precautions and masks and just be able to sit in the bowling alley or the-
What I can tell you is that it is, it was a rule specific, specifically made right before the winter season with the anticipation of revisiting it. We just haven't got to a point where we've gotten the winter season up and running, you know, collectively. There are schools who have not, who are just starting this week. There has not been one game that's been played. So for people who think that we, you know, we're missing out on so many opportunities, there has not been one opportunity in the area for any team to play yet.
So are you recommending that winter sports, as is, keep running it, you know, we're in-house, but for Fall II, we actually compete?
Phase-in, yes.
And the rules might change.
Yes.
Well, yeah, and I think-
You know, we don't know what the rules are. But a definite Fall II will compete with other school districts?
Well, we have to wait.
We haven't gotten that far yet.
It could be definite.
I mean, nothing is, right, nothing, unfortunately, nothing is definite.
Right. No, I just want to know what we're-
But that is the plan. Yes, yes.
Yes. We would like to compete Fall II. We would like to compete varsity, JV and modified.
But that's contingent on what rules change?
Correct.
All right. But we still run into the same issues with busing and so forth.
Busing is a very, is one of our biggest issues because we simply don't have the staff to do it. And with the current rules, where you have 24 students on a bus, it makes it very difficult, especially a school district like ours that's engaged in so many sports and so many competitions.
There are some things we can do, though. We can have games later at night. And luckily, we have lights on our fields and we could change our schedules when we know that there's not such a demand for drivers and buses. We could play some night games. We could play weekend games. So there are ways around it. It's going to be challenging, but there are things that we can do.
2:00 AM football?
Well, we-
Have everybody come to us and play on our fields.
So the clarification you're waiting from the state, will it be accepted by Orange County Department of Health?
So the clarification that we're talking, the quarantining clarification is really going to be accepted by, yes. That's a further discussion with the board, but we have been in communication with the Orange County Health Department because that has been a source of concern from the superintendents. And so we're awaiting their guidance. So, and they've agreed that whatever guidance they give us, we'll follow us, we'll be able to follow as a county. That's a very big deal for us.
Are those going to be guidelines or recommendations? Because the guideline is there to just kind of guide you. Recommendation is there to tell you this is what you're doing.
It would be their recommendation, right? So their recommendation is going to be based on the response that we get from the New York State Department of Health. So that's a big deal for us and I will share that information. So what you have in front of you is what we are required, remember I talked about the guidelines that we got from Orange County? The three things are, you have to complete a code of conduct form, parents have to sign a form that says, look, I understand the risks that I'm taking. All of that information is shared with them. And then students have to have an approved physical. Last Friday night, at about 8 o'clock at night, I received another communication from the Orange County Health Department that added another layer. So I'm happy that we're having this meeting today, which is if a student has had COVID, they're now required to go to their health provider and get clearance from their provider, allowing them to participate in high-risk sports.
So a lot of children are asymptomatic. So how do we know who had COVID, who didn't have COVID? These kids could have been walking around without having-
That is true. They're simply saying that if someone, you know for a fact that someone has had COVID, those students, right. Now, if you don't know that they've had COVID, then there is no requirement.
It doesn't, it doesn't mean that these kids did not have COVID. It doesn't-
Correct.
Not going to have cardiac complications.
Correct.
Maybe the recommendation should be just have everybody get a physical?
Well, everybody has to have a physical.
Everybody does have to have a physical. But New York State Ed gave a different date where typically you would have to have a physical every year. So they would have to have it for this current academic year. But because of issues with COVID, getting doctor's appointments and how, you know, how things were not running for almost a year, the date has been extended. So I believe it's September 1st of 2018 is the guidance right now, where a physical would be appropriate from that date.
Have these forms already been created?
Yes.
I was just going to look that up because when I saw it, I was curious.
Well, only because the other discussion, like in the future, if there was testing, it'd be nice if the consent form also had language in there-
Right.
-that permitted testing.
So it's not permitted when you are engaged in an extracurricular activity as a school district, we can simply require it. Unlike when we were talking about North Main and we were saying that we wanted to test the students at North Main, they had to agree to that or be remote. With an extracurricular activity, that's not necessarily true. If the district decides to say, we're going to test, we don't, there is no permission. It's part of the requirement.
Okay.
Yeah. It becomes part of the requirement, not a sign-off.
Yeah.
Because it isn't-
But at the same time, the parent could decide to exclude their student from sports.
Correct.
If it, so it might be a good question to ask to find out if there was anyone that was going to, you know.
For the winter, it's important to note that students who are currently working out with their teams, if those forms are not signed, they would still be permitted to do the low-risk activities for the next two weeks that we have.
Okay. But if we decide that there's, at some point, there must be testing, that doesn't need consent?
That does not need consent. We have to let parents know that that, it would be something that the board would add back on the list and say, these are the things that you need to do. You will, you know, you will have to agree to test. I'm going to go to the next slide. So the bottom line is the safety of our students and staff is the most important, you know, always comes first and foremost. And it really drives our decisions and our recommendations. And another focus, as we talk about athletes, is bringing all of our students back to school, right? That's the other piece that I, you know, when we talk about having athletes participate, we want to make sure that we keep the focus on the fact that we want our students back in the building. And then the last item is, you know, the social emotional support for all of our students and coaches. It's really important that we do whatever we can as a district to support the students, keep them safe, make good decisions. And I think that collectively, this is a good recommendation. So I'm going to be asking the board to take a vote on this.
I'm having a difficult time rationalizing this or justifying how this plays out. I mean, if it was up to me, I'd say rip the Band-Aid off, everybody back in, school, sports, let's just get on with it. But, so it comes down to allowing students who are athletes to be able to compete, which I'm all in favor for, but not our students in the classroom. All right? Not students in the musical, not students in in-person clubs like interact or student council. So I don't know how I get over the fact that we are asked to approve for one group, but yet academics, which in my mind is really why we're here essentially, is not, you know, I want to give approval, but I also want to give approval for everything.
So I don't disagree with you. I think that I grappled with that as well. But I think that this is an opportunity, right? If we were given an opportunity and the governor came out and said, you know what, I'm going to give school districts the opportunity to do X, Y, and Z and bring in the students five days a week, and here are the things that you need to do, I think Monroe Woodbury as a school district would do everything they could to do that because we are committed to all the students. I think what's unique about this, and I don't disagree with you, that it, we struggled, right? We struggled with this because I kept saying, so help me understand how I'm going to allow kids to participate in wrestling and basketball when they can't do that when they're in school. So there is, there is that bit of, I don't understand. But it's an opportunity. And I think, given the pandemic and all of the regulations that we have, we have so many that if someone gives us, and I call this a glimmer of hope, we're going to latch on to it. You know, we're going to do that. And again, I don't disagree with you, Dan, that you're, you know, you're saying this sort of doesn't make sense. It doesn't. But it does give 500 kids in our district the opportunity to participate in a sport that they might not have the opportunity.
And can I, I can touch on that also really quickly. The, we're trying, some of the things that you're talking about, I got an email last week from the high school asking if the stage crew could meet on the stage to be able to do some like set design and building or whatever where, even though they're going to be recording things and posting it virtually for the musical, there's still in-person things that they can do. Trying to find ways to be able to get some of these opportunities for the kids to be able to come in, given some of these circumstances. The middle school and high school jazz bands are starting to meet after school. I think last week was the first time that they've met in person since the beginning of the school year. Like, we are trying to do that as much as we possibly can because we agree. Like, if these other things are going to happen, is there any way for us to be able to expand that? I mean, I think the challenge with some of the extracurriculars is also giving access to the kids who are the fully remote kids to be able to participate in some of these. So even though we might do some in-person activities for the kids, also offering a remote-only piece for the kids that physically don't attend school. Athletics are a little bit different where the only way that you're going to be swimming is to go to the pool and get in the pool. You're not participating in, you're not participating in swimming remotely. But trying to find ways to be able to offer some in-person opportunities for the other extracurricular activities as well as offering the remote-only options as well.
Then also, this may be an opportunity to develop safety protocols on a smaller scale. If you can, if you can bring in a wrestling team that can safely compete and exercise and practice, then you can definitely say, well, the risk of transmission is going to be a lot less when you bring kids to school and maintain some sort of social distancing. So you can take those protocols and you can expand it.
But it almost seems like they're putting the cart before the horse.
Yes.
You know, bringing the kids to school would be a risk.
To me, it looks like we're going to give you an opportunity to use a small number of kids with utmost diligence. And if that works, if everything goes well, then we can expand that to everything else.
And I agree with Sergey because one of the things that we've talked about is that the, this, the fact that they talk about high-risk sports has really now opened up the dialogue about, okay, so if we're doing this, then why can't we do the other things that we've been, we have shown that we are doing it safely. So I do think that there's going to be new guidance and I am hopeful. And again, I think that we're getting clarification on certain things such as quarantining. But I do think this is a good step because it says, it says next step there. I think the next step is that we use this as an opportunity and to show that we can continue to bring our students in and keep them safe so that we can bring all our students back. Because ultimately, Dan, that's what we want. We want-
I have a question else.
I know, I know.
And that's some, I mean, your point about the updated guidance regarding quarantine, that's not even something that's specifically isolated to sports. That's also, you know, if a student tests positive, do we have to quarantine the entire cafeteria or can we quarantine? So there are implications of this broader than just even the athletic, the athletic.
Yeah.
I have two questions. One is regarding physical education. Are they talking about lowering that 12 feet down to?
I have not heard any change in that guidance.
We haven't heard any of that.
There's no change yet.
I mean, there has, but that doesn't mean that the CDC guidance may-
I mean, they see the irony, right?
When they see, right. Because there is an irony in this. So I'm glad that you brought that up because we really grappled with that.
It was actually one of the situations where we looked at each other and said, so what you're saying is, we can get on a bus, we can go to another school, we can wrestle, we can get back on the bus, come in, and that same student the next day in phys ed class, even though they just wrestled a stranger from another town-
They didn't shake.
Now has to be masked and 12 feet away from their best friend in phys ed class, doing a less risky activity.
And the answer was yes, because Lori asked it on her end, I asked it on my end, and we got the same response. So there was, this has been a work in progress. So your comment about how do I approve this? I go back to my original response because any opportunity that we can show that we can do this gets me closer to bringing in my kids to school, then I will, I will make the recommendation to the board. And I do think that we can do this safely.
And I think Sergey's point of, you're picking the worst-case-
Right.
-situation. So if you're successful with it, all the others should be fairly easy to approve.
Do we allow-
Me and academics.
Do we allow-
It's easy to de-escalate and escalate in this scenario.
Do we allow cohort C students to participate in sports?
Yes.
All remote students are eligible for participation.
If they don't change the guidelines, I think we need to formulate a plan on how to have like 600 members of the basketball team and 1,200 members of the football team.
Call the school day.
That's right. So every day is a practice.
That's right.
Anthony, we are working on that.
Get on that.
We are working on that.
Call them all pro tests.
That's-
I will tell you that we have had a few students test positive in athletics. I will tell you that the quarantines have been minimal and there has been zero transmissions between athletes. So what we're doing is working.
They could taste positive. Just because they're an athlete has no bearing on them.
Correct.
And the transmissions, you know, within a team or between athletes has not happened. I have to, I have to mention our coaches. They are doing an absolutely amazing job at taking care of our kids, keeping them safe, giving them quality instruction in their specific sport, and constantly talking to them about, you know, their behavior outside of practices, there'd be, you know, and just making sure that they're safe. I was walking through the high school today. And as I'm walking through the halls, it is the end of the day, kids are getting ready for practice, and there are five girls' basketball players who are standing in the hallway, who are getting their temperatures taken. And without a word from their coach, from me, they are at least eight to 10 feet away from each other. They're doing the right thing. And I'm proud of them and I'm proud of our coaches. And I'm telling you, we can do this.
What is the protocol, Lori, for an athlete that it's-
So each day, each day when students come, we have two coaches typically scheduled at that time. I told you that we, we've been very creative with our schedules. One coach will meet the students at the door from their sport. There are different points of entry for different sports. So for example, indoor track, they're coming in the downstairs hallway by the, or downstairs entryway by the auxiliary gym of the high school. When they come in, there is a coach meeting them at the door. The coach takes their temperature. If their temperature is less than 100, they're allowed to proceed. When they go inside, they scan a QR code. The QR code is used for contact tracing purposes only. And that code leads them to a Google form, which is another screening. So regardless if they did a screening in the morning or if they hadn't been to school, they're doing a screening for sports. Once the screening is done, there, a spreadsheet is populated with all the students and time stamped of when they were there for contact tracing purposes. Coaches also are required to scan the code. And once they're in the area, we're trying to work in smaller groups. And that's why we've been able to really minimize the number of quarantines. We're not having an entire team together where we have, for example, a girls' track, we'll have one group, you know, working with throwing, one group is sprint, one group is distance, and they're spread out and working with different coaches and not everybody together. So if one student turns out to be positive, there might be four or five students- So if one student turns out to be positive, there might be four or five students who would be impacted. So we're taking precautions like that, and the distance thing is huge. The masks never come off unless a student needs a mask break, and the mask break is done in a separate location away from everyone. When kids go, come in, they're asked to be prepared with their athletic equipment or gear, and they have an assigned spot. I'll mention, uh, boys and girls basketball at the high school and the middle school. Spots are around the perimeter of the gym, each student has their own spot. They stand in that spot with their bags and with anything they brought, because the locker rooms are being used as changing rooms only, and that's their spot to go to when they need their mask break. That's their spot for when they take attendance, and they're in the same spot, we know who they're around, we have it marked off with tape at the distances. We're doing everything we can, and, and again, it's, it's working.
Well, you also, you also, you mentioned that there was no transmission between the students. I mean, you're also not testing who had it, who didn't have it. So we don't know whether these kids have had COVID-19 before, and they're circulating antibodies, and even if one of the members of the team is exposed or has COVID-19, the transmission may not be there simply because these kids already had it. So out of all the students in this district, we don't really know who had it, who didn't have it. That, that's, that's the big issue.
And we're not giving out uniforms?
Uh, we are for pictures. We're, we want to make sure that we recognize our seniors, we want to make sure that they get the pictures, um, to remember their, their time in high school. So we will be giving out uniforms for that purpose, um, but no, we're, we're not planning on giving out uniforms this season, the winter season's going to go like that, and by the time we hand them out, we need them back. But we're gonna, we're gonna make accommodations for our seniors.
Will we be getting weekly updates on?
Would you like that?
I would like that.
Then yes.
If you vote yes.
If I vote no, I don't need the update, do I?
If you vote no, I won't have one.
If you vote no, you'll be getting updates every five minutes.
Is the plan for the, the fall two season that we will have to be back in this similar situation, where once we have all of the guidance that comes out, that we will then have to approve something, or are we just, we're ready to go?
We're ready to go.
Okay.
We would like to approve the fall and the spring. There's only one team in the spring season, and that's boys lacrosse, that's high-risk. So we're really only talking about three teams, volleyball, football, and boys lacrosse. And, um, we would like permission to move forward with all of them.
Right, unless something came, unless we got different guidance, then we would probably want to come back to the board and just, I, I wouldn't do the, the whole presentation, but I would say, this is another piece of guidance. You know, if the county came out and said, look, everybody's going to have to test, then I would like to come back to the board and just say, this is going to be a requirement.
Can we, um, approve it with the, uh, understanding that if there is a change in the county's, uh, guidance, recommendation, whatever it is, that we, we approve you to adopt those protocols, so that we don't have to keep going back to this?
Understood, I, I think the, the board resolution, if we can.
Can you go back on the slide, so we can see the, what you're proposing?
Here's what we're proposing. We're proposing that all students and staff.
Not happens.
That's not it, here it is. Here's our recommendation, just in case you want to look at it. Do you, do you have the, um?
I have the resolution, so I, I can read that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you read that? I think. It does. But I'm going to give you weekly updates, so you know what's going on.
It does cover it, because it says, yeah.
It, it is covered.
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
Subject to compliance with various health.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so are there any other questions for anything?
I just want to confirm, so Lori, the, um, the fall two season, that March 1st to April 19th, that's a typical season length?
No.
No? They're all truncated, right?
It's shortened. Uh, the only opportunity for a, an extended season would happen in the spring, and that would be dependent upon the regions being canceled, uh, but they did already cancel spring championships, uh, so there is a possibility that that season may get extended, and not for anything that's the group that didn't get to play last year.
Okay, but given that truncated season, it's still ample time for what needs to happen to happen?
For the fall, absolutely, a lot of our, our, a lot of our fall team, well, some of our fall teams, I should say, are already doing conditioning practices and skills workouts, uh, as permitted by the state and the DOH.
All 500 will letter as well?
What's that, I'm sorry?
All 500 will letter as well?
We can get whatever we need to do.
I just want.
I will get a letter for everyone, two.
I, I, I think your point is that if we're having, if there are 60 kids that are playing for basketball, and we normally only have 22, will all of those students who are participating in varsity basketball receive a letter?
Yes.
Varsity letter.
Varsity letter.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
I do want to take a moment to thank Bill Dimmitt for these photos, they are priceless. Um, and, and thank, thank Lori, because she did a tremendous job, and her leadership is, is outstanding, so thank you.
I have one more.
I agree.
I appreciate that. And I, I have an amazing team, and our, our coaches are absolutely fantastic, our athletic trainer, and we're a good team.
And let's give some kudos to the students, because come on, I mean, I've tried working out with a mask for 10 minutes, right, I mean, seriously, they're really want to work.
Yeah, look at this young lady who's doing a backflip with a mask on.
Yeah. If I'm not mistaken, even in the pool for diving, they, they wear their mask to the diving board, they get up to, they take it off, they climb the diving board, jump into the pool, get out, go back, get their mask, put it back on.
Swimmers actually have their masks all in a plastic bag.
Yeah.
And when they, after their race is over, they take their plastic bag, they hold it out of the water, they, they swim backwards to the other end of the pool with their plastic bag, and once they get out of the water, they put it on.
They put their mask back on.
And nobody's complaining.
No, they're not, they're thrilled to be doing it, so.
They're excited to be there.
Yeah.
And I wanted to thank you for the, uh, for organizing the, um.
Everything.
We, we recognize this isn't.
The video version, you know, that the parents can, my, my son swims, and we were able to see competitions.
And we recognize this isn't just hard on the kids, it's hard on the families, too, and, uh, a lot of people have missed out on a lot, and we're, we want to bring everything back that we possibly can, and we're, we're just starting.
But again, it's the kids, I know that, you know, Dr. Korfman just said, the opportunity for the parents to see, but I think, you know, equally important is the kids seeing their parents in the stands, right? I mean, that, that's a big draw for them, too, so.
We're getting there.
That was my question, how, is there a plan in place for spectators for outdoor events, outdoor competition?
It's, it's going to be a conversation at the sectional level, this is not a Monroe Woodbury decision, decision.
Can we override them?
It's been a decision at the section nine level.
Can we channel the sound?
Yeah, we can.
Do that at the, at the, at the Super Bowl?
We have the ability at the school level to make things more strict, we can't make them more lax, and that's what we've done. In terms of the mask use, there are stipulations that allow you to take a mask off while you're participating, and we are not doing that.
No, no, I meant spectators, though, like, at a fan.
But, uh, the point is that with section nine, we can't be, we can be more strict than what they say, we can't be less strict.
They dictate how many people could be at a game, they dictate.
As of right now, it's zero.
See, if the parent chooses to test themselves right before entering the competition.
No, they don't, they, they don't.
My, my gut feeling.
I actually asked that question to the attorneys, could we follow some of section nine rules and not follow the other? And they said, absolutely not. You, if you're gonna, if you're gonna participate, you have to follow all the rules.
And Dan, I do believe it will be different once we get outside, and, uh, there will be several athletic directors lobbying for that.
I was going to say, can you at least put in the good word, especially to, to the point of even, even for the senior parents? I mean, even if it's two, two adults for the senior, you know, because it is their last opportunity to see their children play, and I'm sure we're not going to be able to livestream every single game.
As of seniors, as well as, if there's additional capacity, seniors themselves.
Right.
Yep, and I totally agree, and none of those things have, have been, um, will, will be forgotten, uh, at our district level, and we're going to push forward with anything we can.
And aside from swimming, since we're on that, what other sports could we livestream?
So soon, we will have a lot more, yes. Um, we, we have something working in place, we just had to, uh, finish some loose ends, so in fact, we met today to expand that, so we are looking at to get some system to do a lot more. So more to come in the very near future.
Okay, we'll get that update, Lori. Okay.
Weekly.